Good morning. Welcome to this chamber. This being the day and the hour fixed by the Act of Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter for the Organization of Council of the City for the 141st Council will be in order. Our first order of business will be our color guards will come into the chamber. And we have our color guards is being presented by the University of Pittsburgh Air Force ROTC detachment 730. They will be followed by council or newly elected member as well as our re-elected members. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Raleigh Joanna Wilson, who's the daughter of our new councilman-elect Bobby Wilson. If she would please come forth and remain standing. Good morning, Raleigh. She'll help us with our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible and infinite and just as for all.
Thank you. We will now have the singing of the National Anthem. And this will be led by Candace Burgess, who's the daughter of Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess. And she currently attends Duquesne University. Welcome Candace.
(singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? Once so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the round parts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's regal, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night, but our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
The University of Pittsburgh Air Force ROTC detachment 730. Thank you. We'll have our invocation now that will be offered by Leigh Ann R. Younger, who's the pastor of City View Church.
Please join your hearts with me in prayer. Creator and sustainer of all that lives, this morning first we remember our city's first responders and members of the military, both here and around the world. We offer thanks for their service and pray for their safety. Today, we are grateful for the civic leaders present here and their willingness to serve our great city. And because reports published last year tell the undeniable truth that only some of Pittsburgh's residents have access to opportunity, at the beginning of this new session of city council, we pray that justice and equity would undergird every policy discussion and vote. We pray that our city council would be inspired to do the very good work of building a city that works not just for the powerful, but works especially for the least of these and everyone in between. And finally, we pray for unity in our city during this time of polarization, that citizens and civic leaders would cross barriers often created by race and religion, socioeconomics and social status in order to work as one, solving our most pressing challenges as a community. We ask all of this with hope and trust in the inherent goodness of the one who created us all.
We will now, as you remind me, stand and call on Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, council representative for District 8, who will lead us in the singing of "America the Beautiful." Thank you.
(singing) Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of gray, for purple mountain majesties above the fruiting leaves. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and draw thy good with brotherhood from sea
You may be seated. Our first order will be the presentation of the certificates of election by council district to be read by our assistant city clerk, Kimberly Clark Daskin.
Bill number one, certificate of election from the return board of the county of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the fifth day of November 2019. Bobby Wilson, having received 3,975 votes, was duly elected to the office of member of Pittsburgh City Council, District 1, to a term of four years. Bill number two, certificate of election from the return board of the county of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the fifth day of November 2019. Bruce A. Kraus, having received 3,398 votes, was duly elected to the office of member of Pittsburgh City Council, District 3, to a term of four years. Bill number three, certificate of election from the return board of the county of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the fifth day of November 2019. Corey O'Connor, having received 8,263 votes, was duly elected to the office of the member of Pittsburgh City Council, District 5, to a term of four years. Bill number four, certificate of election from the return board of the county of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the fifth day of November 2019. Deborah Gross, having received 8,633 votes, was duly elected to the office of member of Pittsburgh City Council, District 7, to a term of four years. And bill number five, certificate of election from the return board of the county of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the fifth day of November 2019. Ricky V. Burgess, having received 3,272 votes, was duly elected to the office of member of Pittsburgh City Council, District 9, to a term of four years.
We will now have the official oaths of offices. We are honored to have with us this morning the Honorable Darren Rushing, Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Bobby Wilson for council district number one. So if Bobby would please come forward with his family. Kim, can you direct? Okay. There we go.
You, Bobby Wilson, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and the charter of this city, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office to the best of your ability. So help you God.
Let the councilman come and make a few comments. Now I'll present to you the councilman for District 1, Councilman Bobby Wilson.
I'm just gonna look around a little bit. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming to the 141st Pittsburgh City Council's inauguration and reorganization ceremony. I stand before you today as your new councilman from District 1, representing Pittsburgh's I would not be the man, the father, or husband I am today without my North Side community, the people who mentored me and looked out for me. That's why I'm proud to be a fifth generation North Sider and raise my kids on the same block I grew up on. I am excited for the chance to work hard as your new councilman to build a North Side and a Pittsburgh that my children will be proud to call home. From the legacy of Boggs &amp; Buell Department Store, City of Asylum, the Children's Museum, so many wonderful businesses, winding roads, from cozy brick homes to 19th century mansions, incredible views, and even the observatory where John Bashir studied the stars. North Side's neighborhoods are as diverse as its topography. With a variety of attributes that make them unique and special places to live, as a new councilman, I will seek to be informed by rich histories of each neighborhood and the guidance of their leaders. In reference to this history, there is a part we wish not to repeat. In 1954, the Pittsburgh Regional Planning Association published a study for the North Side, which claimed that over half of its homes were dilapidated and decaying, and pointed to the lack of parking. In the areas, as we know now as Allegheny Center, the report proposes the demolition of 36 city blocks, which contained dozens of local businesses, a market district comparable to the strip district, over 300 apartments, and 73 homes. That report came a reality when the neighborhood was flattened, and a suburban-style shopping mall opened its doors in 1966. And in that moment of so-called urban renewal, my grandfather, Robert, and also my grandmother, Grace, were evicted from their homes. So they moved a few blocks down to Lockhart Street in the East Allegheny. So I'm gonna take a pause because I've been hearing this story for a while, and for some reason it's a little bit emotional to me, but so bear with me. So it wasn't long before another project of urban renewal came along and uprooted my grandparents again. The planning process for the East Street Valley Expressway, also known as 279, began in 1967. Though it was met with greater opposition, blocks of families and businesses were uprooted, including my grandparents, paving the way for construction that began in 1982. They then moved to Spring Hill, where I grew up and now raising my kids. So my family's history was shaped by these projects of urban renewal in the North Side. And as your new councilman, I will work hard to ensure that redevelopment in the North Side today does not similarly affect the lives of constituents and neighbors.[1016.31][1016.31](applause) And that the priorities of my constituents are always put ahead of development. As we recognize the mistakes of the past and seek to continue thriving, seeks to continue to create thriving neighborhoods, we must pursue housing for everyone. That is why my top priority in office is preserving and creating affordable housing in the North Side.[1044.83][1044.83](applause) All Pittsburghers deserve a fair shot at a great life in the city. Development must happen equitably. Longtime Pittsburghers must not be displaced by new development. And I firmly believe that good, affordable, and safe housing is a right, not a privilege.[1064.13][1064.13](applause) My second major priority in office will be to improve environment in the North Side. Drinkable water and breathable air are important pillars of my community's health and quality of life. In both respects, we can do much better. As a researcher at the University of Pittsburgh, who has studied lung disease for seven years, I deeply understand the importance of clean environment and its impact on health. I will fight to protect the quality of life of my constituents and its neighbors. Finally, I plan to establish fundamental norms of good government in all that I do as a councilman. There are certain constants to working in local government. We must fill the potholes, we must pave the streets, but good governance requires more. My office will strive to provide the best and most comprehensive facts and information to constituents and community groups, because we want to empower them to understand city processes and resources to make data-driven decisions. And when it is in my constituents' best interest, we will cooperate with anyone that can help us realize these interests. Together, I hope that District 1 will set a new standard for fixing not just problems, but systems that make life difficult and unfair for my constituents and neighbors. So before concluding this speech, I would like to take a few moments to recognize and thank people in places that have brought me here. The Sarah Heintz House Boys and Girls Club, a pillar of my life since I was seven, was critical in my growth and development. When I was in middle school, when I was in middle school, and when my family needed it the most, Sarah Heintz helped us open their doors and allow my sister and I to come over right after school. Well before its programs began, these are the programs that I participated in, taught me how to tell right from wrong and build relationships that will last a lifetime. Finally, before I conclude, I definitely don't want to forget all the people who came out to support me. I am humbled by the number of volunteers who gave me their time to make phone calls, knock doors, and work the pulls. And I am incredibly grateful in the love and support of my parents, my in-laws, my wife Debbie, and our three kids. When I decided to run, I set on a long and difficult journey. My wife and my family sacrificed their time so I could spend countless hours on the campaign trail, talking to neighbors about my vision for the North Side. But I was never alone in this journey. That was beside me every step of the way. Without her unwavering support for my vision of the North Side, without her total confidence that we could both mount this campaign and raise three beautiful children, in short, without her, I would not be staying here today, addressing you.[1246.83][1246.83](applause)
We're also honored to have with us today the Honorable Eugene Ricardi, Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office for Bruce A. Kraus for council district number three.[1286.01][1286.01](applause)
Yes, before you do, I just want to introduce my guests. So please come up. I just am very proud and honored to have my invited guests here with me this morning. They are two ladies from our Belts Hoover City Seniors. Please come up. Margie Thompson and Dorothy McKay, who will be with me, standing with me as I take the oath of honor. And I just wanted to say how honored I am to have you here today, and thank you for being here. Please come up.[1321.21][1321.21](applause)
Yes, thank you. Councilman, before I administer the oath of office, I would like to say congratulations on behalf of the many residents of council district three. Your reelection is well deserved. And personally, I would like to wish you the best, both in your professional and your personal life. At this time, we administer the oath of office. If you could please come forward.
Sure.
Please, up here, please.
Let's do this.
Okay, thank you. Please repeat after me. I, Bruce A. Kraus.
I, Bruce A. Kraus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this Commonwealth.
And of this Commonwealth.
And the charter of the city of Pittsburgh.
And the charter of the city of Pittsburgh.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability.
And most important, so help me God.
And most important, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.[1394.74][1394.74](applause)
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well, good morning, everybody. I have to take a moment. I should have recognized Judge Ricardi before or during my recognition of my dear friends that are here. The judge has sworn me in every time that I've been sworn in, which is a total of seven times now. This will be my, well, I'm a little carried away, four times as a member of council and three times as a president of city council. And the judge is just a very, very dear friend of mine, and I would be in remis if I did not recognize him. So this time of year, with the new year and the holidays upon us, and the promise of everything a new year begins, I tend to become rather reflective and sometimes even pensive as I think about, and perhaps maybe age has something to do with this, but I think about legacy, and I think about what we leave behind, and what will people ultimately remember about us. And as I leave the council presidency and assume a role as a sitting member of the body, I can't help but reflect on the time that I have been given the honor to serve as this body's president. And you know, it's easy to say that, what an honor this has been, but it is truly an honor to work with such a dedicated and skilled and articulate and giving body such as this council. The work, the time, the effort, the energy, the compassion, the commitment that they make on a daily basis, you'll never know. You see us twice a week as we come out here and we perform our duties as members of council, but the obligations and the duties far exceed the times that you see us here actually performing on council. And so as I transfer leadership to who we will elect as our new council president, I want to, I want to be remembered for, for the respect that we have offered one another as colleagues. We have had a very good six-year run here, not working as combatants, but rather as colleagues and comrades with a common purpose and a common goal, and that is to serve the people that have brought us here and charged us with the work that is to be done. And I hope that I'm remembered for ensuring a common table. I remember when Bobby was up here giving his initial remarks, and I was reflecting back to coming the first time and being sworn in and making my remarks, and remembering how important it was for me to talk about inclusivity and equity and a common table that everyone is invited to. And regardless of one's opinion, or thoughts, or processes, or politics, everyone gets heard out. Everybody gets to say their piece, and everyone gets that consideration and respect as we hammer through the process of the decisions that we are charged to make here. And so even when we have differences and divisions, we can agree to disagree respectfully as ladies and gentlemen. I've always liked this philosophy, if you will. And it goes like this, that we are charged to put principles before personalities, and that there will always be personalities in the mix, and that we cannot lose our way being caught up in personalities. We have to stay focused on the principles of what it is that has brought us here and the work that we are here to do. I want to be remembered that I paved the way, or created a path, or created the way that everyone feels that they have had the opportunity to be heard, that we actually have listened to one another, and that we have not risen to make divisive decisions, but out of a mutual respect and common bond, we have collectively come to decisions. I'm proud of the record of this council that through the years, when Councilman Burgess, myself, and Councilman Dowd came in as new members, some of you may remember, we were a little rowdier in those days than perhaps we are today. When people stop me on the street and they say, "My God, council's boring," I say, "Thank you. We work very hard to keep council boring." I want, I want the body to be remembered as a collective and cohesive and respected policymaking entity. policymaking entity for the city of Pittsburgh. And, and I hope, I hope we are remembered, I hope that we are remembered for that. The, this time of year too, as I close out, I love the holidays. They're my absolute favorite time of the year. And I find myself every holiday watching A Christmas Carol. And I watch it time and again and time and again and time and again. And one thing that always strikes me about that movie is when Jacob Marley has approached Ebenezer Scrooge to talk about their sort of legacy. And Jacob is there to tell Ebenezer that he really needs to change his ways and really has to think of a much bigger vision than just himself. And Ebenezer Scrooge says to him, "But you were always such a good person of business." And Jacob Marley pushes back passionately by saying, "Mankind was my business. The common welfare was my business. Charity, mercy, forbearance, and benevolence were all my business. The dealings of my trade were but a drop of water in the comprehensive ocean of my business." And so I charge us, again, as we go into this new 141st council, that we are ever mindful of our business, and that is our business. We protect the public interest and we are in positions of service, not in positions of power, and that we are here to, to serve. And that we are ever mindful of the constituency that put us here and our obligation to be responsible and respective stewards of the public interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna Carter. Love you. Okay. Thank you all.
We are now honored to have with us Honorable James Hanley Jr., Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Corey O'Connor for Council District Number Five.
Sorry, my family's in the cheap seats.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the honor to, again, be part of the O'Connor family and to swear you in on this momentous occasion. Councilman Kraus alluded to legacy, and yours is still being written. I think it's got a lot more coming. So again, congratulations. And on part of the citizens of District Five, thank you for your service and continue. And with that, Judy, if you would hold the Bible, Corey, your left hand, raise your right hand. I, Corey O'Connor.
I, Corey O'Connor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Pennsylvania.
And the state of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh.
And the Charter of the City of Pittsburgh.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you guys for being here, I think. I told Councilwoman Smith I'm excited in a couple minutes. You know, next time we stand up here, I'll have a step stool that'll help me out, get a little taller. I really want to thank Judge Hanley. If you don't know Judge Hanley, he is a pillar, not only in our community, in Greenfield and throughout Lincoln Place, but through Hazelwood and the region for so many years. He is such a stand-up guy. I know he swears in a lot of elected officials, but I don't think I'd be standing here without the support of Judge Hanley, and he's wearing his blue and gold for Central Catholic as well. So I want to thank, thank Judge Hanley for that. I want to begin by thanking the voters of the city of Pittsburgh, especially District Five, for enabling me to do this for a third time. It's a tremendous honor that I am able to stand up here once again. I want to thank my campaign staff. I don't know if Patrick is here or not, but my campaign manager, Patrick. I think my number one volunteer and a great assistant golf coach, Bob Jabanowski, who knocked on a lot of doors for me. I want to thank the members of city council. We worked very well together. We're an extended family here. I want to thank the clerks office. They do a tremendous amount of work for this city, and that's something that we don't thank them enough. And we also don't thank a group enough, and that is our budget office. I don't know where Bill Urbannick is, but if you start at city council and you have a lot of questions, they are the ones that are able to get that job done for you. So I really have to thank our budget office. And I also want to thank, not only my supporters financially, but my union support. A lot of us don't see them each and every day, but without the unions in this city of Pittsburgh, we would not be the city of Pittsburgh. And I really have to thank Darren Kelly and all of the unions for their support in my campaign. I just want to touch on a couple of things that we were able to do over the past four years. First, I'm proud that we were able to, over the past four years especially, pass some historic pieces of legislation. Number one, being we, the city of Pittsburgh and this council, passed the first ever statewide bill for paid sick leave, and it was upheld in court. That meant that that now means that 40,000 Pittsburghers are enabled to get paid sick leave so that they don't have to worry about either going to their job or taking care of themselves and their own health or their child's health. The other thing that we hope the court holds up on is probably the most progressive bill this council has ever passed, and that is the three pieces of common sense gun laws that we passed last, last month. We are a progressive council, and it doesn't happen without my colleagues to get those projects done. We were also to collab, we were also able to collaborate on some historic bills in the ways of giving back to our community. When it comes to an affordable housing trust fund that was never done in the city of Pittsburgh, funding the first ever early childhood care initiative in the city of Pittsburgh, as well as to preserve that our water remains public for each and every resident of this city so that they don't have to pay. Water is a given right, and we don't have to pay an extreme amount of money to do that. So over the next four years, there are a couple of things that I want to focus on in the city of Pittsburgh. First, there is a mystery, and I probably shouldn't joke about this, but in the next four years while I'm here, I want to figure out who stole the manger scene underneath I'm sorry. It's a couple inside jokes, obviously. Now back on track. But no, there are going to be a lot of challenges that face this region. Addressing environmental issues is one, such as air quality. I'm honored to be on the Alka-San board where we can focus on green infrastructure and sustainable infrastructure throughout this region so that we have good, clean water and we can grow a new economy around a green-based economy at the Alka-San board. We also need to work on building, and this is something that I look forward to doing, especially in Hazelwood with the robotics manufacturing plant opening down there, but building an inclusive economy so that every Pittsburgher will have the opportunity to succeed in the city that they love. And I think that's the most important job that we as a city and as a region have to do over the next four years. So I want to thank everybody. So I want to thank everybody for all their support. I want to thank this council again. Now I want to thank, you know, we, we stand up here and we're, we're in the public eye, but we also have personal lives and we also have a personal support team that are with you through good and bad. And I want to thank those individuals right now, starting with my staff. I wouldn't be here without Connie, Lynette, Kurt, and Matt. They are more than just staff, especially when you look at personal issues, and they are always there for your support. And then lastly, I obviously wouldn't be standing here without my family. And we have had a, a fun run over the last couple of months personally, but without them, they don't give you the strength to get through it. And that is my brother, Father Terry, my sister Heidi, and of course, my mom, the best, Judy, who I don't know where they went, but they're all in the back. But I just want to thank them for all of their support, and I want to thank all of you for being here today. And I think we all look forward to starting a new, fresh council in the next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We are honored to have in our presence today the Honorable Mick Pappas, the Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath, the oath of office to Deborah L. Gross for Council District Seven.
Yes.
I think the Bible's over here on the table.
The last time I was sworn in, we didn't have to bring our own, so I didn't know it was BYOB.
Hi. Before we begin, I would just like to say, Deb, I think we all, we all know that your tireless advocacy and dedication to your constituents and the city of Pittsburgh is something that we all admire, and it's such an honor to be able to swear you in for another term today. Please repeat after me. I, Deborah L. Gross.
I, Deborah L. Gross.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
And the Charter of this city.
And the Charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And also thank you to our guest, Bethany Hallam, for pinch hitting for me. Thank you, Bethany, for helping me be sworn in. My husband's out of town, my kids are at school, and my, my, my parents are out of town, so I really appreciate that. And we are so proud of Bethany also, who has just recently sworn in as county council So this is actually my third time being sworn in. I got sworn in, in 2013 in a special election, and so I was sworn in in December of 2013, served two years, was reelected in 2015. And so I'm very proud to be serving again. I want to thank the constituents of District Seven for allowing me this honor. It's been wonderful serving with you, and I'm so proud to represent those constituents. I also want to make sure that I thank all of the people who volunteered on this campaign. We had a really tough fight, and they really showed up. And from early on, from circulating petitions to holding house parties early on, to word of mouth, neighbor to neighbor, door to door, they really, it's a person-to-person thing to be elected to city council. It really is about people connecting with each other and talking and sharing what's important to them. And so I really want to thank them for opening their homes and their hearts and sharing with me what's important to them and for electing me to this office. I don't want to forget to thank the people who worked so hard on my campaign. We have several in the audience today. James, Kelly, Danielle, thank you for being here with me today. You were here, you were there every day, every day at that campaign office. We had a lot of fun. This is one of the first elections where I actually had an actual, physical office in my district, and what a world of difference it was. It was so great to have a place where everybody could be together and really share in the highs and the lows and the stresses of, of an election. And I really appreciate you all being there for me all that time. So the, the people of District Seven, it's an interesting district. We have struggled with what some people would only love to have in this region and certainly in the city, which is so much development. I talked about it last time I was up here four years ago. My, my council members and colleagues are probably sick of hearing me talk about it because it's a daily issue in District Seven. And I want to recall some of the comments that I made early on in the campaign and at the beginning of this year when I was given the opportunity to testify to the House, the Democratic Party House Representative's Policy Committee, the State House Policy Committee for the Democrats. And I really talked about the struggle in the city that has seen this kind of sudden onset of development, when so much of our policy rightfully, and so much of our concern also rightfully, is around the under-invested communities, the disinvested communities, the blighted communities, the communities that, that don't have enough growth and economic activity. But on the other side of the coin, when you have hyper-investment and gentrification rather than blight and displacement, are those not the flip side of the same problem? So it's that market activity that can either be neglecting communities or just overwhelming them. And it's the rightful place for your local government to struggle to correct both of those imbalances. And they may not even be disconnected, right? It's the same market forces that are pouring too much resources into some neighborhoods and neglecting others. And so it's that conversation here, I think, that we struggle with. It's very hard for us as a body to craft the policy that works for both extreme ends of the market. And so I really want to thank my colleagues for working through those issues. They are not easy, and I've really learned a lot from my colleagues and from my constituents as well, who have very strong local leadership. I'm really blessed to represent eight neighborhoods in the city of Pittsburgh that have so much robust community, really active leaders on every block, whether it's Little League teams or it's garden, community garden activists, or it's food activists, or it's the, the local neighborhood association. They really pull together and they have that one-on-one connection to where we can work through and find the right solution for the neighborhoods. And I think, I, I want to say a special thank you to Pastor Younger for bringing up the study, the recent study this year. I serve as a member of the Gender Equity Commission that released a report about how badly we're doing in leaving some parts of our community, especially black women, behind, right? We have not achieved we have not achieved the inclusivity that we talk about and that we strive for. And we need to do better. And that Gender Equity Commission is really pushing for us to center gender and race in the middle of all of our policymaking and all of our budgeting. It is our job. We have collective resources, and we are the representatives that get to choose how they should be allocated. That's, that's the main part of our job. And so that is the work that is still yet to do. When we talk about equity, I like to remind myself as a working definition that that means both ownership and control. So when we're talking about equity in housing, equity in transportation and mobility, in even childcare services, and equity in food across the city, equity in, in utility burdens across the city, even equity in the kinds of neighborhood services that are available, how much local neighborhood control and ownership is there, I think, is a really fundamental thing for us to remind ourselves as we do this work moving forward. And so I'll stop there.
We have one that are born out of a group of people who were enslaved for 246 years, and we have another group born out of people who weren't. What do we do, 150 years past slavery, to close that gap? There's been Plessy v. Ferguson, Brown v. Board of Education, segregation, but what do we do as a body here to close that gap in our schools, in our region, in our housing, in everything which the Gender Equity Report talks about, but manifestations of our inability to confront what ought to be our primary focus, closing the gap, the disparity in the region? When you wonder why businesses don't come here, because they can't bring people here to progressive, because we're not. We're a B-city. I remember a statement my grandfather told me, "The difference between a good celloist and a great celloist, good celloists practice all the things at which they're good, great celloists practice all the things at which they're not good. I encourage us to begin practicing those things at which we have not been good." Sir, would you repeat after me? I, Reverend Ricky V. Burgess...
I, Reverend Ricky V. Burgess...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And of this state...
And of this state...
And the Charter of this city...
And the Charter of this city...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of this office...
The duties of this office...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Reverend Burgess is charged with shepherding us through this process.
Thank you.
I just got back last night from Florida, where my wife and I celebrated our 35th wedding anniversary. I'm delighted that they're all here today. My oldest son Ricky, who is a PhD student at the University of North Carolina, my middle son John, who works in oil and gas leases and personal fitness, my youngest son William, who has followed me into ministry and is a full-time PhD student at Duquesne, my daughter Candace, and my son William, who's just recently married, and my daughter-in-law, both Abassadors and Masters in Pitt at Tietzer at Beshear, George's girlfriend, Lucilla, Mission Counselor at Chatham, Candace, my daughter, finishing her senior year, a vocal major in classical music and opera singer. I'm grateful for my children, I'm grateful for their success, and I think that's important. They have been with me. My wife has allowed me to do this work, and so we are very grateful for that. I want to thank my staff. Marita Bradley, Marita came to me as an intern, and worked her way from an intern to my Chief of Staff, and is now more than even a Chief of Staff, she's a Mini Director of the City in my office. Sean Carter, who has been with me from the beginning of my campaign. We started off as opposition, and early on, he came with me, and he has been with me every moment of every day since I've been in office. Alicia Sims, who is newest to my staff, but the oldest in terms of my relationship. She was born in my church and grew up at my knee, and as much as my daughter, as Candace is. And I am grateful all of them have participated in our campaign. In addition to them, we have Oliver and Brittany Beasley, Sean Harrington, Lucille Prater-Halliday, Keever Fisher-Green, Christian Harris, and then always with me, even in spirit, is, and with me today is Gina Thorpe-Brown, and Jeff Thomas, who started me on my political career. I want to thank them. We have spent the last 14 months in campaign mode. We have faced eight opponents, we raised $150,000, and even up till this week, they have endured and been with me through the ugliest, nastiest campaign of my life. I have been attacked by self, sad, selfish, small-minded people, and they have been with me and have supported me through it all. For that, I appreciate it. So, let's to the task at hand. My favorite sermon is by Martin Luther King, it's called "The Drum Major Instinct," and then he teaches us that Jesus gives us a new definition of greatness. He says, "The greatest among you shall be your servant." And with that new definition of greatness, everybody can be great, because everybody can serve. I believe that down to my toes. I have raised my children to believe and to live a life of service. And so, I have been proud to serve my church. Members of my church are here. Now, as we read about this church, somebody say amen?
Amen.
But they're here for the last 35, five years. They took a young guy, wasn't married, couldn't preach, and at least one of those things are true now, right? I'm at least married. Hopefully, I can preach every now and then. My assistant is here, Rob Glover, and some other staff of the church are here, and I'm grateful for letting me practice on you. I am proud to be able to serve the college. I'm in my 29th year as a tenured professor, Community College of Allegheny County, and I've had thousands of students now, and many of my students now have doctorate and master's degrees, and I've hopefully have been some influence and some encouragement, I'm proud of that. But last but not least, and the reason that we're here, I am proud to serve my city. With this induction, I am now the longest-serving African-American councilman in the history of the city of Pittsburgh. I am proud to be a partner with the city. I am a partner with William Pududo, who is the mayor of our city and a visionary. I am a partner with his Chief of Staff, Dan Gilman. As a result, I have been partnered with some of the directors who are in the room, certainly with the controller, who is my friend, Michael Lamb. We are personal friends. I'm grateful for that partnership. By working together, we have made our city safer. When I first came to council, people laughed at me when I said we would stop the homicides. Tribune Review has posted a few days ago that we have now had a 20-year low in homicides in the city of Pittsburgh. They say some of the programs we partnered together, like the Group Violence Initiative, and ShotSpotter, and Stop the Violence, have been a small part of that victory. We have made our city, by working together, we have made our city stronger. In my district alone, we have built 750 units of affordable housing. We have built, we have helped usher in the Choice Neighborhood in Lamar, where the federal government says is the best example of mixed-income development in the country, and is the vision of what we hope to do moving forward in the city. And Pam Collier and Ron Porter, who work as staff with me, they help build this development across our city, and I'm proud of that. Lastly, by working together, we made our city secure. We've raised the wages of hospital workers and of grocery store workers, and I've helped lead the fight to make sure that every single child in the city of Pittsburgh who applies for a summer job gets a summer job, every single one. Lastly, with Councilman Lavelle, and I want to thank my colleagues in council, but in particular, I want to thank my two closest friends, Teresa Kell Smith, whose brother was my teacher at Central, her and I, people don't know this, that she's my close, she's heart-to-heart, we're heart-to-heart, and I love her, and Councilman Lavelle, who's my running partner. We are always in this together, him and I, and I, you know, I appreciate them, and they have been with me, and I am with them to the death. And so, we have brought in recent legislation to make city all-in legislation, to force our city to not just talk about equity and diversity, and not just bring props of diversity and equity, but actually to do the work, to actually make sure that there's investments in African-American communities, to actually make sure that there's hires in boards and authorities and directions. Lastly, lately, we have declared racism a public health crisis in the city of Pittsburgh. We are the second city in the nation to do that, because when you look at outcomes for African-Americans in terms of housing, in jobs, and in participation in leadership, we are abysmal, and some of us, unfortunately, relish in that, but we are not going to let us stop us. So, what are you going to do, Rev? Well, Rev, they talk about you because you're the mayor's boy. Everybody knows you're the mayor's friend, and, you know, when you speak, they know that's speaking for the mayor, and you lead this agenda on council, Rev, what you going to do? Rev, sometimes in your neighborhood, you know, you build all this affordable housing, you've made all these great changes, and small-minded people, you know, they talk about you. What you going to do? Even sometimes, you know, people in City Hall, and people outside City Hall see what you've done, because of your stature and your success, they talk about you. What you going to do? Well, in the Book of Nehemiah, when Nehemiah was building the wall and having all this success, when the enemies came and said, "Why don't you come down and talk to us?" Nehemiah said, "Well, I'm doing a great work, so I can't come down." What are you going to do? "I can't come down now, I got more houses to build, I got more people to hire, I can't stop now. I got Homewood Avenue to rebuild, I can't stop now, I got Black people to support." But not just them. My vision is not just for African-Americans. My vision is for the whole city of Pittsburgh, because we get better together. As Squirrel Hill prospers, so will Homewood prosper. As Shady Side prospers, so will Sheridan prosper. As the Hill Districts prosper, so will the other. We have to do this together, and so I'm not going to stop. And I will let you view my success as my legacy. And so I'm going to end with, I'm a preacher, I'm going to end with something, and end with the preacher thing. I wasn't going to say this, but I'm going to say it now, because it's so true, and I want you, if I don't say anything else, this is my belief, and I think this is really important to say today of all days, it's called the paradoxical commandments. People are illogical, unreasonable, and self-centered. Love them anyway. If you do good, people will accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Do good anyway. If you are successful, you will win false friends, and true enemies succeed anyway. The good you do today will be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. The biggest men and women with the biggest ideas can and often are shot down by the smallest men and women with small minds and small ideas. Think big anyway. People favor underdogs, but follow only top dogs. Fight for the few underdogs anyway. What you spend years building may be destroyed overnight. Build anyway. People really need help, they really do need help, but they may attack you and hurt you if you try to help them. Help people anyway. Give the world the best you can, and you'll be kicked in the teeth for it, but give the world the best you have anyway.
Thank you. Being that the elected members of council have all been duly sworn in, will the Assistant Clerk please call the roll?
All right. Here.
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 Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Conner.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Nine members present.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the 141st Council of the City of Pittsburgh. Congratulations, and we hope a productive year this year. The next order of business is the nomination and election of the President of Council. What is your pleasure?
Madam Clerk, if I may, it would be my honor and my pleasure to nominate Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Teresa Kell Smith has been nominated by other, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Being that there's no further nominations for President of Council, we will close that nomination. Will the Clerk call the roll on the election, please?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Conner.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The eyes have it, and we now present the Council President, Teresa Kell Smith. So, we'll administer the oath of office for Councilwoman Kell Smith. We have the Honorable Judge Martini here to administer the oath for the Council President and your son.
Wait, can we go to the judge? No, my son's on his way.
Okay.
My son's coming up right now.
Her son is on his way.
He's parking. Thank you, everyone. I just want to say real quickly, I'm waiting for my son. I didn't know I was going to do this today, so I didn't have a judge, who, thank you, Judge Martini, for coming in so quickly. My nephew came in to visit, now he's holding a Bible. Your mother will be happy. And my son is on his way from work, he's running up, so I apologize for the delay. So we'll administer the oath of office for Councilwoman Kell Smith. We have the Honorable Judge Martini here to administer the oath for the Council President and your son.
Wait, can we go to my son?
Okay.
My son's coming up right now.
Her son is on his way. Thank you, everyone. I just want to say real quickly, I'm waiting for my son. I didn't know I was going to do this today, so I didn't have a judge who, thank you Judge Martini for coming in so quickly. My nephew came in to visit. Now he's holding a Bible. Your mother will be happy. And my son is on his way from work. He's running up, so I apologize for the delay. Oh, good. Come on. Okay, TJ, come on. This is my son TJ. He gets his height from me, okay?
Good morning. Before we begin, I just want to say that I am honored to be here today to swear in my dear friend Teresa, the hard-working, dedicated councilwoman of the Second District, I believe. Yes, Second District. And I am very proud of the most prestigious honor bestowed upon her today by her colleagues. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Ready? Aye.
Aye.
Teresa Kell Smith.
Teresa Kell Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And charter of this city.
And charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of President of City Council.
The duties of the Office of President of City Council.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Teresa.
Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, may I present to you Teresa Kell Smith, President of Council. Okay, thank you. I just want to thank everyone. I want to thank Madam Clerk. As you can see, she's keeping me in line here already, and she's done that for us for some time. Our clerks' office, our camera folks, our sergeant-at-arms, keep us all rolling and doing the things that we need to do. Sometimes when people don't realize that they're leaving us notes and turning the page and leaving us little pens and things, we won't be able to do all that we do without them, so I just want to thank you all very much. I want to thank Judge Martini for being here and coming in, my son, my nephew, my family, my staff for all that they do. But I really want to thank my colleagues right now for having faith in me to do this. Any one of us could have done this job. We have such amazing council and such amazing colleagues, and Councilman Kraus really has led us to work together. And with Councilman Burgess's leadership in the Finance Committee, we have learned to work together through differences and, you know, our challenges for different things that we have in our district. And I just want to say, I'm so honored to serve with you, and I can't thank you enough for this vote today. I also obviously want to thank my constituents and working with the administration. I think that we'll be able to get some great things done across the city of Pittsburgh, and I'm eager to work with every one of my colleagues. And with that said, Mayor Paduto isn't here. We will proceed with the reorganization of City Council, and we'll make the appointments. Councilman Burgess, Parks and Recreation; Councilman Coghill, Public Works; Councilwoman Gross, Intergovernmental Affairs; Councilman Kraus, Human Resources; Councilman Lavell, Finance Chair; Councilman O'Connor, Public Safety; Councilwoman Strasburger, IMP; Councilman Wilson, Land Use. And we also have the appointees for the Carnegie Library Institute. And Councilman Kraus, do we have to do that right now? Could I wait, work with you on that?
I think it's at your discretion, Madam President.
So I'd like to wait because I definitely want to put, I know Councilman Kraus loves that committee. I'd like to put him back on there, and I'd like...
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'd like to talk with the members about some of the stuff. Okay. And now can we please have the nominations and election of a President Pro Tem? What is your pleasure?
President?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Reverend Ricky Burgess.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Councilwoman Deborah Gross, please.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we have two nominations, Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Burgess. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote? Okay. Okay, so can we please have the vote for Reverend Burgess, please?
Aye.
No.
No.
I know.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
With that vote, we'll announce that Councilman Burgess, congratulations, you are Council President of Pro Tem. And we will now have the benediction. We are honored this morning to have Reverend Darrell T. Candy, pastor of the Rodman Street Missionary Baptist Church, who will offer the benediction. Pastor?
Not only did we start a new year, but we've started a new decade. When you look in your rearview mirror, you see what we have done in the past, but when you look through your windshield, you see our bright future. And the windshield is much larger than the rearview mirror. So we are honored and blessed to have a new president, to have new council persons, so that we can move our city forward, so that this city will be the most livable city for all of its residents. We know that we can do that together. When you look at the word illness, when you remove the I and put a we, it turns into wellness. And what we want to do as a city is move the I's away and bring the we together so that we can be a city of wellness. Let us close in prayer. God, we thank you for this 141st Council. We thank you, God, that we are entering a new decade, a new year. We thank you for our new president and our new President Pro Tem, and we thank you for our new council persons. And we pray, God, that we will work together, that we will remove all the I's which lead to illness, and that we will come together with the we which turns into wellness. "Now unto Him that is able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we can ask or think, according to the power that worketh in us, unto Him be glory in the church by Christ Jesus, world without end." Let everyone say amen.
Can we please have any of the elected officials here, please stand up? We'd like to acknowledge them. And I know County Exec Fitzgerald was here earlier, and so was Controller Lamb. Is that it? Okay, we just want to acknowledge them, and thank you for being here and sharing this day with us. And you're all invited to a reception immediately following this ceremony in councils' conference rooms. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You're moved?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.